One nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Call the meeting. It's Duncan to call the road.
Lawrence, Bradley, here. Hastings?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
Pistol?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
It's time I'll ask for motion second to approve the agenda is presented.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Ask for a vote. Roll call.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
You have in front of you the minutes and monthly financials from the April 8th, 2021 meeting. Entertained motion second to approve those as presented.
Make a motion to approve it.
Any discussion? Ask for a roll call.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Brings us down to department head reports. Airport commission, I do not see Jason Hayes here. We have a grant for thirty thousand. That's really our new business, our only business. Talk about that. I think things seem to be running pretty smoothly. Oh, we, in March, we had approved that hundred thousand for their grants. They're gonna, I think next month, they could have that next month, toward the end of the month, so we'll get that full amount back. That's all I have on the airport. Any questions? Brings us to animal control. Officer Tim Pike here. I talked to Lori. I think Will and I, next Tuesday, are gonna go check that lake out. She was there all day on Tuesday, so we'll do, we got set up, I think, with her at nine in the morning on that. And I didn't get a report from her. She hadn't texted it to me as of yet. Tim, go ahead.
Okay. The month of April, I make nine calls and see if I can pick up one dog. We do have a little room at shelter right now.
What was that last thing?
We do have a little room at the shelter. It was been full for.
Right. I didn't get her report, it didn't come through, so. Any questions for Officer Pike? Thank you. Brings us down to fire department. Chief D.L. Webb.
I just had a couple of things this month. We did have a couple of false alarms. We had a wreck over on Highway Nine that they asked for the jaws to come out to. Fortunately, nobody was entrapped. We did have a structure fire over on Douglas Lane the other day that was a loss in the trailer. I brought things in to show you. We found these on YouTube a couple of years ago, and they weren't approved in the United States at the time, but now they're approved. This company has shown that they're approved in the United States. It's a fire suppression system. You hang this like over your stove or whatever, and if it gets hot, it'll pop and put your fire out. The bigger ones are for like a car fire or a house fire. If there's a fire, you can actually throw it in, it'll pop, and the fire suppression will go across and put the fire out, or help put the fire out. They call it suppression, but all the videos show, depending on how big it is, it puts it completely out. This company is out of South Carolina. I called him just to see if we could get some of these as practice with. I called the state fire marshal to begin with, to ask him if he knew anything about it. They'd never even heard of them. So I talked to the guy in South Carolina. He happened to be from Hope, Arkansas. So we talked a little bit, and he said, let me call the boss in Denver, the owner of the company. And they sent us a care package. They've sent us two of these and two of these for free. On their website, these are about eighty dollars. These are about a hundred, a hundred and ten dollars apiece. The difference in these and a fire extinguisher, our fire extinguisher has to be checked every year, hydrotested every five to ten years. These are good for ten years, and they make them in different colors, designs, so these can actually come in like this. It says fire department. You can have US Marines on it, or Air Force, or it can be a decorative part of your house. And what I'm liking about them is that a child can use these. Pick that up, throw it into the fire, and put the fire out. So, next Thursday is our Rutherford Fire Meeting night. I plan on getting the state fire marshal and anybody that wants to come from other departments, police department, anybody that wants to be there to see how these operate, because even these little ones would be real good if it works like they say it does and find it out. To even have one of these in a police car, to be able to put a car fire out before it gets too far. So I'm really excited about this. The guy's found it on YouTube, like I said, about two years ago, and we just kinda played with it till now, and now we're gonna try and actually see if it works. Other than that, y'all have any questions?
What time do you start your meeting?
Five thirty, next Thursday.
Okay.
I've never even heard of those until you mentioned it.
Cut and age.
There you go. I take. I thought, I didn't introduce you earlier, Superintendent Jay Chalk here, and yeah, in the back, and his wife, Jen. I had him to come. I was gonna, under Parks, we were talking about, I'd like for you to come to a meeting here, and so I want to kinda tell us what's going on at school. But also, anything out for Chief Webb? Any questions? Next Thursday at five thirty. Thank you. Brings us down to Parks and Street Department. Charles Wilson.
Parks and Streets. We had talked about a lawnmower last year, and I'm gonna have to have a lawnmower. We can figure out. I don't have the money in my budget to buy a lawnmower, but we're to a point that by the next council meeting, we need to figure out where we can get about nine thousand dollars to buy a lawnmower. Unless, we wanna go back to, I mean, it's, we're to that point. We got that, I keep patching that other old mower up. It's sixteen years old, and we're dropping about three hundred dollars a month in it. If we keep doing that, we can just go buy another one. But that mower is pretty expensive. I mean, it'd be great if we could come up with twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars to buy another one like that one. But I just don't see that happening, but I'll take pretty much whatever I can get. And you can get a decent sixty-inch Grabley heavy-duty mower for about nine thousand.
We'd give up on that poor worst already.
We, I.
Few years ago.
Turning wrenches, I turned wrenches on it today for about two hours just to get it back to the building.
You sound like you've been working on a mower, Charles.
Yeah. But I mean, and, but I mean, we're really, I mean, seriously, we're to that point. We're either gonna have to drop nine thousand in this mower, taking somebody and I fix it, or we can go get a new mower. The old bad boy's getting wore out, and we'll just rotate it. And the way I've had it going, it's been great, because I've got one mower on one side of the river, and one mower on the other side of the river, and they've been keeping everything downtown pretty well cleaned up, all the alleys mowed and stuff.
The park over there.
Key, all cleaned up, so, and we can use it, and it's not as much mowing as the big parks, so we'll take the old mower and just rotate it over to do the small jobs there, the Shannon lot and all that stuff.
Are you wanting another Bad Boy or a decent?
No. I'm gonna stray as far away. I mean, nothing bad to say about Bad Boy, but I just don't like Bad Boys. I'll not ever want another one at my house.
So between now and the next council meeting, just come up with.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, wherever we can find some money. I mean, y'all can dig around, I'll give you a month or so to dig around and try to find me some money for one, but. I'd like to try the new Grableys, and they got a good industrial Grabley over there that's.
Okay, we can do that. It's in the minutes, I don't think.
Oh, and.
Motion second, we'll just check the budget and sit down with you next week sometime, or maybe, probably not tomorrow, but Monday or so. Can you just get by with what you got?
I can get by until the next council meeting.
Okay.
I mean, that's, I mean, everything's mowed. So we've got a month or so here. I mean, I don't wanna go much further than that, because we'll, we way behind, but we can transfer around here and there and do some patching and keep it up for a month or so, but, I mean, everybody's, I mean, it's tinker on it for two or three hours, pour a couple gallons of hydraulic oil in it and mow, so, I mean, and with that mower, it's not really hydraulic, it's a different type of synthetic stuff, and it's eight dollars a quart, and when you pour two quarts a week in it, it's starting to get expensive quick.
Yeah. Yeah, I had other thing under Parks is ice machine. We'll just do that at the same time with Craig down there.
Yeah, I mean.
We got that little one, but.
Yeah, we bought a smaller ice machine for up there, and, and it's not a waste. I mean, we can transfer that five hundred dollars and I can put it in my shop building for my workers to fill up their water coolers.
No, no.
And be just props for that. But yeah, we need to figure out and get some prices on some ice machines and get a bigger machine up there. I mean, it, it got us past what we kinda needed with shared and different ice machines, but on a regular basis of a good season, it's just gonna be a hassle and a struggle for Craig or whoever's running it.
Okay. Well, we can do that, shut that down, and we'll jump on to streets, but the parks, the regional tournaments went fine.
Yes, the kids had a blast. From what I seen, everybody had a good time, the kids really loved it, and.
How'd you clean out the drain to drain the park out? That's a good job, Sam.
And that's what it's about. I mean, we got fences moved in for them just in time, and we got the mud pushed around and got it dried up. We rolled it over several times till we got it dry and got it smoothed back out, and, I mean, I had a lot of help, Sheriff's Department and a lot of people coming up and helping me, and we, we put it all together and made it happen for them, so.
Yeah, y'all got a lot of compliments on that, and it was well appreciated.
School sent up some, they sent up some guys one day and helped me. They helped put the fences up, fix all that, so yeah, it wasn't just me and my crew. We had, we had help from several, so.
Right.
And that made a big difference, that gave me time to do other stuff, so.
Okay. Anything on the parks for Charles? Brings us to street, since you're talking.
I got some, we rebid our stuff that we was gonna do last year, and I got the bids in, but some of them, there was some pretty good discrepancies, and I hadn't had time to match them with the old bids and make sure they didn't make a mistake, but we're just, all we're after is just approval to take the low bid, or the moderate low bid, depending on which company we deem to be, to do the best work, but, like I said, a couple of them come in really, really high, and I wanna look and make sure that they didn't miss do something and have an opportunity to change it if they want to.
This is streets from?
It's Shake Rag.
Quality. Right.
And then I'm gonna go ahead and go down all the way to the transfer station and take care of that new tile we put in there. I've gotta put in two new tiles and replace them. There's gonna be another new tile added at the home company building to help that drainage problem, and then there's gonna be another tile on quality over there where it was crushed. I've just not cut it and replaced it yet, but it's gotta be replaced, and right before we pave it, would be a good time to go ahead and replace those and get those fixed and get it capped.
Do you anticipate getting that back before the next meeting? I mean.
Yes.
Okay, you need to.
I just wanna, I mean, I've got them in, but I just wanna go through them and match them up with last year and make sure that they didn't miss something or.
Sure.
And make sure that, give everybody a fair chance to be.
Where they, when they're about, you need a motion second to accept the lowest bid?
Yes, lowest or the marked bid that's.
And I'll check with the council before we do that. We, now it's a road that's starting to undo on us.
Yes. That's our heavy traffic road. We got that street there in front of Walmart that comes in from the stoplight, and we'll go all the way to the four-way and go ahead and go through the four-way down to the dump, and then we'll go quality down by Page Inn Electric, all the way down to Shake Rag, and then come back out to sixty-five. That, part of that is our heavy traffic, and it's, and it's rough. I mean, that front of Walmart's getting rough, and with Walmart's plans, it may fall into where they can tie in good to their street. That'll give Walmart a spot to tie in if they do any asphalt in there, because, hey, I think they have some plans to change some stuff there, so.
We're set for about turn to get another street. Steve Morgan was talking to him, I talked to you about that, to get some overlay done for about a mile and a half to two miles. We get that about every five years, and we're due for that, and we may do that first thing in 2022, but go ahead and apply for it, but as soon as we decide what street we wanna do, we'll do that.
And if we get that, and that'll give us our next monies that we have for our next, from our next budgets, is to, if we can do a mile and a half, two miles of this over here, that'll just come in and do some pieces here and there and clean up some streets. So it, it helps. Anything we get helps.
Does the, that's the city street. They, they stripe it, whoever, I mean, bidding it will stripe it, or?
We'll have to call in a striping company or have me stripe it, and I did find a striping company, and he'll give us a quote too, so.
The other, I'm just curious, you know, I know they're in a whole lot of room there, but at one time, I thought it used to have two lanes there by the post office that went out, so you could go left or right.
Yeah, but the state highway.
That's state.
State highway picks that.
It's not, it's not wide enough.
It's not a go right unless you're turning that, and, and I hate it, a lot of people have been jumping.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm talking about that, the post office.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that center lane?
Yeah.
It's wide enough, and when we stripe it, we'll have to do a little bit of measuring and some figuring, but it's wide enough to actually make a turn in to go in there, I believe. I'm thinking there's enough room. I've looked at it, and I've watched them go ahead and swing in there, and there's still plenty of room, so we may have to push them just a little bit to the right, a little bit to the left to, to make it, but I think there's enough room in there.
You know, once the light changes, it's, if the light don't change, you could go right, but right now, that's not an option.
Yeah.
Yeah, when they curve that, I think they brought that curb on the south end further north.
Yeah, yeah, they, they squeezed that in, 'cause I guess they just didn't want people sitting here waiting on the light and somebody swinging out, and that really didn't make any sense, 'cause it, it would actually let the post office people come on out, but, and that may have been what they were scared of, is people from the post office go ahead and swing in there and then go ahead and try to go out and merge in, so.
Well, I've been told it bothers the street light when they come out from the post office.
It changes, and a lot of people don't really understand how that works. You got northbound traffic, and they jump over in that turning lane, and that camera picks them up, and nobody's coming, and they go ahead and wheel in, it'll change. It's already snapped the timer, and it's gonna change regardless if they're sitting here or not, 'cause it's already triggered the machine. And everybody thought, well, it's changing and nobody's there. Well, somebody was there. They just.
They went through the picture.
Yes. It's, once it's, once you start that timer and trigger that, it can't stop itself. I mean, it learns, it gets quicker as it learns, but we've had so many lightning strikes and fire outages that every time it gets to a point where it's really working good, we'll have a fire outage, so then it has to start the learning process all over again. It wipes the computer, and then it slowly starts learning to get faster and faster, then bang, lines go out, and then it starts all over again. It took them a while to explain that to me, but there was one guy from the state finally come in there and put it in lane and started, and I'm like, cool, I understand now of why it's, oh, one day you can pull up, it's a thirty-second change, and then the next time it's two-minute and fifty-minute, fifty-second change, and he's like, well, let's drop power, and it's back into a learning curve.
Anything else for Charles? One thing is, I think Glenda, we're gonna meet tomorrow at one on grants, and one thing will be that other overlay that we'll apply for, pick that, that mile and a half, two mile, and get you a set of little map, should be there, and also, some stuff, we're trying to clean up the hillside, that's why I had Jay Chalk here tonight. Just what, you know, you come down into Clinton going north, and you see that, our auditorium up there, we've had the state basketball tournament up there, we've had two regionals, softball and baseball, got very nice facilities, always hard to find our school. Well, the school, city's gonna try to work with the school and anybody else, the county and the state, whoever, and try to get a road put in to the auditorium. We've been after that, kicking that around for a long time, but trying to get an organized effort on that, see if there's any, any historic preservation for school health deals, been talking about that, you know, you could tie sidewalks in, have a walking trail of the old highway, so really wanna push that. Jay's here tonight. Jay, you can stand up this microphone and tell everybody what you're gonna do for the city, you know. I, I want you to, you just say something under Parks and Rec, 'cause I know y'all worked with Charles a whole bunch during that tournament, and that turned out really well.
Well, this is all positive. I mean, there's a lot of long faces in here. I just wanted to start off by, you know, this is Jen and I's ninth school district we worked in, and I'm not saying this because I'm back home, but the collaboration in the two years that we've been back home's been incredible, and with the city, the community, and, you know, we, Richard said, you know, we've gone together on some grants, wanted to redo the city tennis courts, that we're proud to have that collaborative effort with everybody, but, one, you know, I wanted to thank y'all, the council, and I value your time, so I'll try to be short, but, you know, for the way that the state basketball tournament worked out, you know, it's the first time, I guess, the school districts all, you know, ever put that on. We were lucky, we got the bid through the Hudson Saw Activities Association, was incredible, and, you know, just to let you know, the school district took a loss on the tournament. Ninety percent of the gate goes to the AAA, we get ten percent, you know, luckily, we've got a great booster club with Philip Jones, they get the concessions, so I'm not complaining, because the amount of good that came out of that tournament was incredible, and, you know, and I'm very proud of our city, and I'm very proud that the city profited, the businesses, the restaurants were crowded, and it was just that collaborative effort, and I wanna thank Richard for that, and Charles, the incredible job he did, you know, went out and put the, the yellow jacket on the streets and signage, and then, what a lot of people don't know, I'll admit, I puckered up a little bit, that last day of the tournament, I get a call from D.L. and Richard, and we've got a water main break going to the auditor, I mean, going to the arena, the main one, and we've got people from all over the state here, and we planned it, the first day amended, Will and them, incredible, got after it, had that thing fixed by the time the next game started, and we didn't miss a beat, and I'm telling you, that's, that's just incredible, 'cause I don't know how I was gonna send people from all over the state home without getting to see a basketball game.
Tomorrow.
On any water, you're gonna have to go home, you know, and, but I appreciate them, and then the regional tournament, y'all, you know, I don't wanna get emotional, but that softball field was underwater a week before, and to go out there and see the condition it was in, with Charles and them doing that work, was incredible, and, and I just wanted to thank y'all, from my heart, for what y'all have done for us, the school, and our kids, 'cause they're the ones who benefited from, from all that, and like Richard said, he kinda stole my thunder there. I hope we continue our collaborative efforts. You know, the school district, and I, maybe they can explain it to you better, y'all probably know the council, but I just had a map of, Tim, if you wanna hand that around. So the school district owns this portion of land that faces sixty-five. There's an old, I think Roger Street is the street that goes up there by Verdano Stores to the left, to the south of that. The school district to the right or north of the road, Rogers, I think is the street name, the school district owns that, so there's an old bridge, rock bridge there from, you know, I heard back in the, you know, probably.
Same.
Early nineteen hundreds, there was a bridge there, which is beautiful. You got the, you know, the rock kind of bluff line on the right, more north of that, and, you know, we would really appreciate it if we collaborated and, and put a street that would go straight from sixty-five to the arena auditorium, and that, again, that's our land, the school district, I think's more than willing to do that, and I think this has been, and I've been told this has been kinda planned for rear-force superintendents, and we're ready to go to action and get it done, and we've actually had a surveyor coming out, now they're six weeks out because they're backed up, they're gonna come, the school district's paying for that, we're gonna survey it, lay out where the road's gonna go, and hopefully, we'll continue on that, because there are, they're gonna, there's beautiful plans, and I don't wanna speak for Mr. Dan Oath, but he's really verbally been excited about the plans, and maybe hopefully helping out collaborating also, where he would put in a waterfall there at the bluff line, for it to be a, just a centerpiece for the town, and so, hopefully, you know, y'all will go in on that with us and think about that, 'cause I think it'll benefit the city tremendously, so.
Yeah, and I didn't have any numbers, I don't know, but you talked to business owners, and hotels were full, and they sold a lot of hamburgers and steaks and stuff, so it was great for the town, and, anything, ah, thanks a lot.
Thank y'all.
Anything else for streets, parks?
Well, thank you on parks. We got a holiday weekend coming up, and I'm gonna let Jason, if y'all don't mind, put it out on the blast that the team camp is free for that weekend, if people can't get into, like, the lake or something, and they got some kids in, they'll go camp, the river's perfect, perfect height right now to have some fun, so I'd like to open that up to free camping, and I'd like to bring in a porta potty for that weekend and have it sit there on site, so.
We had a motion second for the low, did we?
No, we did not.
Yeah, take the low bid, and we'll still come back to you and say, here's what it's gonna be, and here's who we're going with. I'll ask for.
Make a motion.
Motion second.
I'll second. Approved, I should say.
Any discussion? I'll ask for a roll call.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Uh, one other thing, did you talk about Jump Be Gone?
No, I did not.
Okay.
We had Jump Be Gone scheduled for the seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth, but it's supposed to rain, I think, every day that week, sixty and seventy percent chance, and that's pretty miserable, get out in rain and pick all this stuff up, so we're gonna push it back two weeks and see how the weather goes, so it'll be two weeks from, it'll be the week right after the holiday, right after Memorial. We'll get back in and try to.
I hope so.
Somewhere around the second, third, and fourth or something.
I just got a text from someone, said it's school health.
It'll be the third, fourth, and fifth, it's, it's all, yeah. Looks like, yeah, we, the thirty-first, first.
First is on Thurs. Anyway, it'll be the.
First of June?
First week out of Memorial.
Okay.
And, I mean, like I said, I think we've got a full week, I think they even bumped it up from Monday to Saturday.
Okay.
And that's, that's pretty tough to get out and try to wrestle that stuff around and the rain, and, I mean, it's pretty tough just to do it anyway, but if you got queen-size mattress out there, it's been raining over two days, it's, if you don't think it's hard to pick that up, it's gonna be worn out.
Heavy. Anything else for Charles on streets or parks?
Parks, I forgot to ask, are we, did we ever figure out anything for like the backstops of the three softball fields to put?
Like the netting?
The netting.
No, that's one of the deals for Glenda tomorrow, we've got that, that's one of the deals, it's.
Donkey? Yes. Foul ball catcher.
Right.
And it really, really simple to do, 'cause I think right in the center of that, we can set us a pole, a main pole, to carry the weight, and then we can just let it drape off the ball three feet.
See what I saw happen, there was four fields that were backed up like ours are, so a fourth field would be where the, where the pavilion is, or the music stage, and it was a pole straight up, and it drained to each field, and at the, at the back of the backstop, they had, it was like a six-inch gutter, the ball's rolled into the six-inch gutter and dropped down at the back of, you know, one or the other field. I mean, it's not saying that field one, you hit a foul ball, and it ends up in field three, but it drops at the backstop behind the umpire, so it keeps a kid from getting smoked in the noggin.
And it knocks over the heat back, like it's.
Right. It's pretty warm.
And that tournament, so.
Yeah, 'cause at the regional tournament, I saw several mile-high foul balls land. Yeah, because at the regional tournament, I saw several mile high foul balls land inches, and strollers, like just mist strollers, and I'm like, oh, that would not have been good, so.
Maybe we can figure it out with the mower, you know, I think we can do some in-house with the poles that we have down there by your shop, and then just buy the net.
Yeah, yeah, just find the new net, and actually, just, probably just have one made, once you get out there and do your measurements and have one made, and then go ahead and string them all in and hook it up.
And I may have-
We know where a bucket truck is, we could use that.
And I may have a gutter we can use to catch the foul balls in with the shot.
Anything else for Charles? Appreciate you, and Jay and Jim, they're gone, thanks for coming. Brings us, anything else? Thank you. Police department report, Chief Jay Murdock.
Excuse me, y'all have my report, if you have any questions on that, be happy to answer. The only other thing is, unlike Charles, I don't need a lawnmower, but our radar units are getting old, and I'm getting to the point where I've only got three really good ones that'll certify. I'm having to cannibalize a couple, and I've got one that started policing when I was a sophomore in high school. So I would like y'all to think about maybe just try and make find some money, and let's get those replaced, so we can have some equipment made this century.
How much you got on that, Jay?
Uh, I'd like to get four on the state bid, be about ninety-two hundred dollars and some change. But that'll get all of our radar systems to be the same brand, so if we have one that breaks, we can interchange them while they're still under warranty.
I, I think we ought to get them for him, because I was down there the other day, and they're having to take those things together to get them to work, so they're in bad shape though.
I was looking at it earlier, and I guess they're like, from what I'm looking here, about twenty-one hundred, twenty-two hundred dollars a piece.
On the state bid, yes, sir.
Yeah, and the state bid was, it's supposedly a little bit, because this company's out of Texas, I think.
Yes, and that's Stalker radars, that's the same stuff the state police uses, that's the three. When John Hobie was chief, we bought two of them, you guys gave us money to buy two of them. That's what we're using now, they're, they're about the best you can get, particularly for that price.
Really, my thought process and just what I, what I work off of, they got, say, a ten year life expectancy or something, you know, and you've got a three year warranty on one, why buy four at one time? Why not buy one and then in two years buy another? So that you don't, you're not buying four or five at one time, you know, you're always rotating.
And I had looked at that, yes, sir. Right now, I've got three cars with no radars.
Well, how many people work a shift? So you've got the re, you've got the re that are working right now currently?
On day shift, yes, ma'am. Myself, my detective, he's not gonna get one when we get back to full strength, Solomon will be on day shift. But what I'm trying to do is put one in every car.
Do they stay in the car?
Yes.
Or can you take them out? That's what I'm asking.
I can, but it would be about an hour per shift, swapping them around. These are actually built in, in-car mobile radars.
They need to be, once they're certified, they don't need to be moved around much either.
Correct.
Yeah.
Like a scope or a gun?
Whatever. The only time, you know, that's my concern or my thoughts, that's on just spending ten grand at one time and then five years, spend ten grand again.
Well, as we're going right now, we bought one on a grant, I think it was twelve years ago, one of our stalkers, the one that's in Scott's car. It is the best radar that we've got in the fleet, and it's eleven or twelve years old. So it's not like at four years, like a car is gonna go out of warranty and they're gonna fall apart. It's just getting to the point, the Genesis radars we've got now, we're like the one, we're putting more money in them to get them to work than, than it's costing them basically over the years of buying them.
My thought on the chief, and that probably goes to every department head, and I've kind of preached this to them, is like, really, really, really need to concentrate probably in the fall, and stuff about maintenance of effort, and looking at everybody's inventory and budgeting things, and it's not necessary that you would need it, because if an emergency happens-
Right.
We can take care of emergencies. But that's where a maintenance of effort plan really helps every department, and, because we'll have an idea of how to better budget for the year. And then again, if something comes up and there's an emergency, regardless of which department it's in, we're, we're able to handle that.
Yes.
And, but, we kind of like Sammy too, I, I think, you know, we, we need to put our personnel in the best position possible to do their job, regardless of what, what department it's in. So I think we need to do, what we need to do to make sure our officers are on there that are, that they've got the right equipment and they're, they're being safe, because again, that's, my thing with law enforcement is, it's only a job I know really, that you just don't know if you're coming home, you know, every day, but you're, and you're putting yourself on there too. Kind of like the fire department, tell you, we need to put the best stuff that's out there because DL needs his men to go in there and fight a fire, but he needs to have the, the equipment there, can do it right, and it's gonna be safe.
We'll talk about that later.
I'm gonna fill you up. Keep talking up to him. And Charles, it's the same thing with Charles, we need to make sure our people have what they need to do their job, because it's a direct reflection on, on our city and stuff. And I think we've done a good job, I think this council's done a good job, and I think that's a good job as well, so. We can come up with a plan and be able to do it.
Right, I think we've, we've got a mower, we got radar, we got-
Might have to look at a grant.
Netting, sure. What a thought.
That's what I was gonna ask, I mean, you know, grant wise, there's certain grants that's only for these items, you know, that you can, you can use them, but you can only use them for doing this.
Yes, sir, and we had one of those grants, but with everything going on in the world, I thought it was more important to update our body cameras system, because our body cameras, the ones that we had most of our patrol guys, were the first ones that we bought, I want to say eight years ago, I'm sorry if my years aren't exactly right, but Axon is not supporting those body cameras anymore. So I felt it was more important to buy three body cameras to equip our uniform patrol officers. Mainly, A, for help with prosecution during court, I found that when the defense attorney sees a body camera, we spend less time in court. Also to protect the officers and to protect the city, so I got more bang for my buck spending that grant money.
Yeah, yeah.
Getting body cameras than I did one radar.
That's like, I mean, Tim's saying, you know, I mean, a radar, for one thing, is just a kind of a revenue generator, that, that's not personal protection or, so.
I agree with that to a point, but, but when one of my officers is stopping a guy at a hundred and one miles an hour at three in the morning coming through talk talk, at that point, it becomes a public safety issue when they're driving those speeds. And without a radar, you can ask Mr. Brown, it's, it's hard to prosecute even at that speed.
Okay. Yeah, well, just to come back next month and say, we'll pull it from this account or whatever, out of admin or wherever you can get it. Anything else for the chief?
I do want to tell, tell you that one of your officers conducted himself very good yesterday, I was very proud of him. I was pumping gas at Walmart, and I was like in a situation where I wanted to run away with the gas in my car. I just heard altercation, and it was probably about twenty feet from me, and this guy was screaming obscenities, and I was like, I'm gonna be in the middle of a shooting, because he said, put your, you know, just go ahead and shoot me, and then an officer came, and he, he apprehended him, got him down pretty quick, but I didn't know if, he said, don't shoot me, I thought, oh my goodness, but, I mean, it was very quick, and you had him down, apprehended good, and then called for backup, and I was like, where? He needs backup, and it was, it was a, it could have been a, it was completely full of the gas, the gas stations, I mean, everybody was there, but he did very good, and I was like, good for you, but it was not a good time for me to go up and say, you did a great job, but I want you done, thank you.
And I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure I know which officer that was.
Yes.
Two of my officers conducted themselves fantastically this morning. I don't know if you heard, we had a hundred mile an hour chase come through town, they blocked off traffic as a guy was coming through to make sure nobody's pulling out in front, chased him into Comley County with the help of the Bemford County Sheriff's Office, Comley County Sheriff's Office luckily, we got him in the custody, nobody got hurt, and that was Officer Patterson, which I think is the officer you're talking about, and Detective Adams, I've been doing it sixteen years, listened to enough chases, I've been in enough chases. That was probably about the most perfectly safe textbook pursuit I've seen in my career. So they did, they're a great reflection on this city. So I just like to say that they did a fantastic job.
Okay. Anything else for the chief? Okay, Jake, thank you. Brings us down to water, service department, Will, hit you.
All right, so I can't follow that up, but anyway, I'm not asking you anything, we'll start out that way. Water loss from March sixteenth, April sixteenth, we were thirty-four percent for the entire system altogether. Burnt ridge is still thrown on our side, we're still at fifty-two percent on them, and Denard is down to thirty percent. Thank you, and we'll go down some more too, we found a couple more leaks this week there. So Denard's gonna make us look good, we just gotta get some burnt ridge action. We have finally, we like one more meter change in all the meters of burnt ridge, and so it wasn't, wouldn't have been on this pace, because I do think that those meters are gonna help some on that, so we've actually just finally, we like one more change in all those old port setters, and having all those meters changed, so that shouldn't make a big difference. Besides that, we were at seventy cents a thousand on the treatment costs for our chemicals, and that's about it on that. We do have, I don't know if anybody's been going listening here lately, Cornerstone Construction is back in town, they are doing that little small extension that we're paying them to do, that goes from sixteen east up to the new line of water, we've put it in, so they're installing it now, that should be done by mid next week, and then tested, and then that line will be active. We have had another slide, Mother's Day, we were out with the guys during the rainstorm and stuff, we had another slide pop up there north, we only had one customer on it, because everything else south up here is shut off, it's already slid, and we've got it shut off right under the way, but we had one customer that's still on the main, leaving Denard pump station headed back south on the west side of the road, so we went out and fixed it that morning, got it done, and everybody got to go ahead and consider loans for the rest of the day, we got it done pretty quick. That's about it as far as construction stuff goes. We do, we've got a chance to buy a vehicle, purchase a vehicle off with, with you guys saying it'd be okay, we've got a vehicle that the police station has that, I guess, did the chief, did you drive it? Yes. So last chief Willoughby drove it, it was his personal everyday ride, and it's missing the cylinder, missing the number three cylinder, so they're, they're not using it, wanting to get rid of it, so he had talked to me about if we'd be interested in seeing what's wrong with it, and said we could fix it cheap enough, even with the price he's offered it to me for, he's wanting to use that money to-
Equip the new car.
Equip the new car, that's what we've talked back and forth, you know, as well. So we're talking about maybe about four thousand for this truck, it's one of the better body trucks, it'd be probably our best body truck on the water department side, we got it. And even if we had to put a new motor in it, it'd be, you know, less than ten grand is what we're thinking, so it'd be a good opportunity for us to have a newer, newer truck in our fleet, so.
You mean anything from the council on that?
I mean, as long as the council, we have budgeted to buy a vehicle, it's already in the budget.
It's in the minutes, and he discussed it, that's-
It's, uh, my water board has approved it, we actually have the truck right now at the mechanic shop, just seeing what it is. We have talked to other people, this is the Dodge Hemi, and it actually goes from four cylinder, eight cylinder, number four, and talking to someone else, they actually had one in their fleet, and it did that, and it cost them seven hundred bucks to fix, you know. It may not be that situation, but we got a mechanic in there right now, so. It'd be a good opportunity for him to come up with some money to equip this vehicle, and it'd be a big step up for our fleet, our fleet's in pretty rough shape, so. I don't think I need to vote or anything, I just, if there's any objections to that or concerns, you know.
I think with the used car market like it is right now, it would be a good investment. I mean, the truck, you know, if you can get it running ten thousand.
It's fairly low miles, you know, the interior of the truck's in good shape, the outside body of the truck's in good shape, it's just missing the cylinder, it's missing the number three cylinder, anybody that's messed with these things, every time you Google one, and it says, that's what happens on the ones that go from eight down to four, that's the one that goes out, so.
Sure, we're like, it's the same with the one.
Usually one and three.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for, Will? Thank you. Brings us down to zoning department, Tim Clark.
Well, while we're at it, I'll, I would like one of those electric hummers they're coming out with for the road enforcement. I don't think we can use one because they're new, so whatever y'all would like to do, go ahead and load it.
Better wait on the jet.
Let this fire out, pack with-
They motion second to adjourn.
Why can't you get a lawnmower while you're at it?
Yeah, we could just do it all at once. Okay, Walmart, I got a revised, updated plan for them, the only thing they wanted is the, the fitting rooms, and then where the aisle where all the drinks are now, that's where their beer coolers are all gonna go, and then the north side of the building will be their online pickup station. They'll be parking in places there, you order online, go by there and pick it up, so that's, that's the addition to their remodel plans. H and R block, I'm sure everybody's seen, they're, they're framing up their building. The, the weather sirens, we're still, they all work except the one on sixteen west, and they're still waiting on parts for that one to come out of a plant in Connecticut that is still on COVID lockdown, I think they only allowed like two or three people in the plant at the time, so normally what would take a week to get, takes two or three months, so probably get those middle of June, he said, but, you know. The Metro Bass Club tournament that we have every year, they had originally scheduled for October the second and the third, all right, they changed that to October the sixteenth and seventeenth, which is their end of the year championship, so they'll have people in town from surrounding states, and I talked to Lori from the Super Eight, and she said she's already taking reservations for that week, people from Texas, Oklahoma, Louisiana, so AMP sponsors that every year, that's, you know, that's what we want, people coming to town and, you know, eating and, and staying in the hotels. On the flood maps, I talked to Lee Brishoner, the engineer for F T N today, they've got all their survey research put together and done, they're working on finishing up the hydrology study, and he said, the next step, they'll, they'll hand it off to FEMA for the final approval, but before they do that, they'll let us look at the maps, we'll get a preview of it, he said that'll probably be in a couple of months, so, and I think he will probably come to our council meeting, show what they've done, their maps, let us ask questions, and, you know, if there's anything that we like or don't like, let him know, but we'll actually get to preview those maps before FEMA ever looks at them. And I was happy, he said it just, we'll get to look at it in a couple of months, so that's a good thing.
When will he be here?
He said in a couple of months, that we know. Uh, the last thing, the auto repair shop that's right across from Pistol's Pond Shop that was damaged by the flash tornado we had, I met with Donnie Hollins the other day, and they are going to tear that building down. So that will just be empty lot, rather, they're leveled off, so, and that's all I've got.
Anything else for Tim? Thanks. Uh, brings us down to old business, which there is none, one thing that I did want to talk about last month is the liquor percentage of, we have a workshop, that never materialized, wanted to make sure everyone could be there, we talking, before we leave here, I'd like to get a date we can all agree with to meet and discuss that at the next council meeting, have a, and I, we landed on the twenty-seventh of this month, was that, that's a Thursday that you have the AMP, and then at five thirty, or six?
Six o'clock.
And so about six thirty on the twenty-seventh, we meet the same place right here, if that's good for everybody, don't have to lock it in right now, but-
We can have it after the meeting if y'all do.
Is that good for you?
We have it tonight, after the meeting, I mean, there's not a whole lot to discuss, I don't think we brought in a whole lot of revenue. Probably.
That's up to y'all, twenty-seven suits me.
That's too far away from me to know what's going on.
We'll do it tonight, Tim, everybody?
I'll keep, I'll keep, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
I'll keep going, twenty-seven.
Well, let's just decide, if we want to do it tonight, we'll do it after.
I know, it's your beer that matters.
Oh.
You better handle that.
If you send some flowers, we'll just, I just want to throw that out there, we'll, we'll figure it out after the meeting if we want to.
Yeah, that's right.
Fix a date for that, so, whatever. Brings us down to new business, what we have is a resolution for the airport to get a grant, I think we have a copy- Uh, brings us down to new business, what we have is a resolution for the airport to get a grant, I think you have a copy of that. Uh, it's, I'm just seeing a motion a second for this resolution, it's designating and authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement for Clinton Municipal Airport, it's a COVID, uh, thirty thousand dollars. Dan Clinton was telling me today, and Jason Hayes, that, uh, there's gonna be thirty thousand dollars available, but if you look over at what they'd sent you, one of it is, uh, uh, cost related operations, personnel, cleaning, sanitation, janitorial service, et cetera. Uh, it's gotta be, uh, attorney certified no later than May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, we're basically saying, yes, we will apply for this, I think. Resolution reads, uh, whereas the U S Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration has offered the city of Clinton a grant under the Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Program, a copy of the grant offer is attached here too, incorporated therein as Exhibit A, and whereas the grant offer must be accepted by the mayor no later than May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. In order for it to be valid, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Clinton, Arkansas, section one of the mayor is a signatory agent, or the successor of said agent is hereby authorized and directed to execute, execute a certain grant agreement attached here to, here to is Exhibit A. I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve that.
Can I make a question?
Second, any discussion? So it's just, give them the okay to pursue it, I'll ask for a roll call.
Barnes?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Thank you. Brings us down to public comments, any, uh, chief, or, excuse me, sheriff, uh, I don't know if you wanted to say anything or not.
I'm here for questions.
Okay, anything for, Marcus? Box your cousin in, so, you're doing a good job, so.
He better than I.
Yeah, he was, uh, he was really happy with the city, and a lot of people were, so, appreciate that. Anything else? Uh, I have just a, uh, member of the family of Ryan Sox and Elsie Chalk, that's unbelievable, uh, both of them, two good, good folks of this community. Uh, also, uh, regional attorney did well, out of Coring Road, we discussed that. And, uh, this Saturday, the flags will be at half staff, or I think for the fallen police officers and emergency service, that's what the flags are out for. They'll be at half staff Saturday, a lot of times, seem like they're down at half staff lot, so somebody asked us what it is. Uh, after the meeting, I don't know if we wanted to, we'll, we'll discuss if we want to meet tonight, or, or whenever. Nothing else, I entertain a motion a second to adjourn.
I know you want to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, we stand adjourned.